Good evening. We're going to wait a little bit before we get started to make sure we give people enough time to join, so we will probably pick back up around 6:05. So hopefully, we're looking forward to our public hearing this evening on the Tyler Bike Stripes Project. Again, want to welcome everyone this evening. It is 5:59. We're going to wait about five minutes to 6:05 before we start to give people enough time to join online. So if you will, wait with us until 6:05. Again, for those who are just joining us, we are going to start the public hearing shortly. We're going to wait till 6:05 to give people a little bit more time to join in online. Well, good evening. My name is Cameron Williams, and I'm the Traffic Engineer for the City of Tyler and the city's Project Manager for the Tyler Bike Stripes Project. I will serve as the moderator for the public hearing this evening. I'd like to start by welcoming each of you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your interest and community involvement as it relates to the development of this project. Public involvement plays a vital role for all of our projects, and we are glad you're here to provide us feedback. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Mina Solomon from UT Tyler. Dr. Solomon has been involved in this project from the beginning, and he will be providing the technical presentation this evening. This hearing has been organized by the City of Tyler and is being held to receive and consider public comments regarding the Tyler Bike Stripes Project. The environmental review, consultation, and other actions required by applicable environmental laws for this project are being or have been carried out by the Texas Department of Transportation pursuant to 23 U.S. Code 327. Notices for this hearing were published on the City of Tyler's website, through the City of Tyler Press release, in the Tyler Telegraph, and through direct mail. The latest designs were made available for public review beginning on April 27, 2020. You will have three opportunities to make comments on tonight's presentation. First, you may make a public verbal statement tonight by phone during the upcoming comment period. Second, you can submit a statement by email. And third, written comments will be taken tonight and through the comment period by email or US Mail. Information will be provided later in the presentation. All comments must be received no later than May 26, 2020. Many of you have attended a previous hearing. However, the benefit of those who have never attended one, I would like to explain how this public hearing will be conducted in order to meet specific federal and state requirements. After my opening remarks, Dr. Solomon will give a detailed presentation of the project, its location and design. I will then outline the project's public involvement activities, the project's schedule, and its associated cost. We will recess the hearing for 10 minutes. This will allow for a short break, so that any lag in the virtual meeting will not affect the next segment and give you time to review any specific information online at the city's website about the project. Following the recess, we will reconvene the hearing and invite individuals wishing to make a verbal statement to call in. Following the call-in period, we will have closing remarks and then adjourn the meeting. You may be asking yourself, what is the purpose of a public hearing? Well, there are four essential purposes of a public hearing. One, to inform citizens of the status of the project and present the recommendations based on studies performed. Two, to describe the proposed improvements so that the public can determine the project's potential to affect their lives and property. Three, to provide citizens an opportunity to present information and their views at a stage in the design process when flexibility to respond to comments is still possible before final design is completed. Fourth, to develop a record of public views and participation to help with recommendations for future decisions. This hearing is being held in compliance with both federal and state laws. The state is required to certify to the Secretary of Transportation that a public hearing was held. A transcript of this hearing will be prepared for the official record. Following this hearing, the city will proceed with finalizing the design. Your comments will be addressed and will be given full consideration in the final design. Highway planning and construction requires close cooperation among all levels of government. Partners for this project include the City of Tyler, UT Tyler, the Texas Department of Transportation, and the Federal Highway Administration. At this time, I would like to transition to Dr. Solomon for the detailed technical presentation.
Good evening. My name is Mina Solomon. I'm an Associate Professor of Civil Engineering at the University of Texas at Tyler. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Texas. Today, I'll be sharing with you all a technical presentation with regards to the project details. In this presentation, I will cover the following aspects of the project: project development, timeframe, bike lane selection criteria, bike share versus bike lane differences, buffer zone introduction, street parking situation, historical preservation efforts, design updates, overall map, as well as the 11 spokes and the downtown hub. Let's start first with a bit of the historical background related to the project development timeframe. Mr. Billy Heps and Jeff Austin III were leading the Bicycle Advisory Committee since early 2015. They reached out to me and my Transportation Engineering Research Group to seek advice on where to start the bike lane project and to investigate its feasibility. That was in February 2015. I was interested to help with this and intention to improve the quality of life in our city by introducing another safe mode of transportation. I had to hire graduate students to help starting gathering the required data. In order to keep the project going and to fund those students, I received initial financial support from the following entities. From UT Tyler, I received $5,000 in May 2015 and another $5,000 in June 2017. From East Texas Communities Foundation, ETCF, we received $20,000 in July of 2016 under the Retail Merchants Association of Tyler Charitable Fund. And from the Retail Merchants Association of Tyler Charitable Fund, we also received $20,634 in November of 2017. Also, we received $1,000 in July of 2016 from the Greater Tyler Association of Realtors, and the City of Tyler also contributed $3,000 in October 2016. Also, we got funding from Texel Construction Association. That was $2,500 in February 2017. In May 2017, the City of Tyler and my research group at UT Tyler prepared and submitted set-aside grant, and in August 2017, the city received the grant approval. Now, let us discuss briefly how we selected certain roadways to serve as bike lanes. The route selection process for the development of bike lane and bike path map can be separated and simplified into two main factors: road configuration factors, such as number of vehicular lanes, presence of turning or passing lanes, average lane width, and the presence of street parking, as well as the safety factor. Safety factors such as traffic volume, street maximum grade, street lighting, distance difference, presence of bicycle lanes, and posted speed limit. An analysis of the existing road configuration factors allowed us to determine if bike path integration into the potential path or existing street was physically feasible. And the safety factors allow us to maximize user comfort and safety. Overall, the factors ensure that the user's safety is prioritized and that a newly implemented bike path will not negatively conflict with current vehicular traffic. The developed bike path network is comprised of bike lanes and bike share sections. What is a bike lane? A bike lane is a striped bike path on the pavement intended for bicyclists use only. Although the federal minimum is currently a four-feet-wide lane, we are maintaining a minimum of five feet to maximize safety. Some bike lanes were developed in conjunction with a buffer zone, which will be discussed further into this presentation. What is a bike share? Bike share implementation was necessary to preserve network connectivity in locations with insufficient lane width space for the implementation of a bike path. A bike share is marked along the vehicular path, and bicyclists share the road with vehicles. Bike share implementation was conservative and used in limited locations. What is a buffer zone? As seen in the image, a buffer zone is an extra striped separation between the bicycle lane and a vehicular lane meant to provide an extra level of safety by increasing the space between the bicyclist and the motor vehicle. This is actually a plan view schematic for the buffer lane that is referenced from the National Association of City Transportation Officials. Why is a buffer zone not implemented in all locations? A buffer zone is not necessary for all locations. Bike paths were intentionally developed in locations with low vehicular traffic volumes and low posted speed limits. However, in certain locations, it was necessary to select routes that did not meet the ideal conditions. Therefore, buffer zones were implemented in those locations to ensure that the user's safety was not compromised. These are locations with high vehicular traffic volume, high posted speed limits, and sufficient travel lane width to implement the buffer zone. Next concern is, will there be a loss of on-street parking? The answer is no. We will not be removing parking along any location, and the bike path network and the parking will coexist. Moving on to the topic of historical preservation, the downtown locations will be a bike route-only design. We will not be striping on any red brick roads. This has been done in an effort to conform to the city's historical preservation efforts. There have been design updates since the town hall meeting. On spoke one, a partial section will be removed along South Baxter Avenue. The removal will not negatively affect the connectivity of the network. We have strongly considered the concerns expressed at the previous town hall meeting, and we will be removing Spoke 1A from the bike path network. The entire section will be removed, and the removal of this section will also not have any negative impact on network connectivity. The starting point of Spoke 5 has been shifted. Yale Drive will be removed from the bike path, and Townhouse Drive will be the new route introduced as a replacement. Overall, we are taking community input very seriously, and if you have any concerns, remember to provide feedback at this public hearing and through written comments to us to review. The project identifies 11 bicycle lane routes and a centralized hub near the downtown area. The proposed work includes painting bicycle lanes and placing designated signages along the existing roadways. As you will notice, each spoke will have some bike lane sections as well as bike share sections, depending on the condition of each roadway and if they met the bike lane definition or bike share definition, which was mentioned earlier in this presentation. For Spoke 1, it will run from UT Tyler along Old Omen Road, McDonald Road, Golden Road, Divine Street, and Mahon Road to Tyler Junior College. The overall length of Spoke 1 is about 3.14 miles. Spoke 2, it will run from Loop 323 along Garden Valley Road and West Oakwood Street to Bonner Avenue, from Oakwood Street from Bonner Avenue to Ferguson Street, from North Glenwood Boulevard along Forest Avenue and South Leon Avenue to South Parkdale Drive, from Forest Avenue along West Irwin Street to Confederate Avenue. The overall length of Spoke 2 is 4.3 miles. For Spoke 3, it will run from Loop 323 along Pollexie Drive, Pichole Street, Amherst Street, and Danny Brook Avenue to Houston Street. The overall length of Spoke 3 is 3.56 miles. For Spoke 4, it will run from Loop 323 along Bellwood Road and Houston Street to South Vine Avenue, from Shaw Street along South Leon's Avenue to Bellwood Road. And the overall length for Spoke 4 is 1.42 miles. Spoke 5, it will run from Cambridge Road along Townhouse Drive, British Drive, Baylor Drive, Karen Drive, Powell Drive, Barbie Drive, and Sutherland Drive to East Grande Boulevard, from Rose Redmond Park along Danny Brook Avenue to Amherst Street. The overall length of Spoke 5 is 2.16 miles. For Spoke 6, it will run from Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard along Palace Avenue, Harmony Street, Border Avenue, West Queen Street, North Russ Avenue, West Bow Street, Moore Avenue, to West Oakwood Street. The overall length for Spoke 6 is 1.74 miles. For Spoke 7, it will run from Old Jacksonville Highway along Gilling's Oaks, Cherry Hill Drive, Holly Stone Drive, Pinehurst Street, Holly Tree Circle, Woodlands Drive, Holly Tree Drive, Reek Road, Flavordale Drive, Trenton Drive, Timberwild Drive, Old Bullard Road and Shealy Drive to Driftwood Lane, from Shealy Drive along Brookside Drive and Fair Lane to Sunny Brook Drive. The overall length of Spoke 7 is 6.42 miles. For Spoke 8, it will run from Loop 323 along North Broadway Avenue, west of 32nd Street, Glass Avenue, and west 28th Street to Mamie G. Griffin Elementary School, from Texas College along west 29th to Glass Avenue, from west 24th Street along North Palace Avenue to west 29th Street. The overall length of Spoke 8 is 2.25 miles. Spoke 9, it will run from Danny Brook Avenue along Amherst Street and Sunny Brook Drive to Frankiston Highway, from Sunny Brook Drive along Camilla Street, West Azilia Drive, Terry Hut Drive, and San Jacinto Drive to Milan Drive, and from west Houston Street along South Shelton Avenue, west 6th Street and Robertson Avenue to Sunny Brook Drive. The overall length of Spoke 9 is about 4.32 miles. For Spoke 10, it will run from Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard along Winona Avenue, east Hillsborough Avenue, Church Avenue, and Babst Avenue to east Queen Street. The overall length of Spoke 10 is 0.98 mile. Spoke 11 will run from Loop 323 along east Irwin Street to south Beckham Avenue, from east Irwin Street along Palmer Avenue to Divine Street. The overall length of Spoke 11 is 2.54 miles. The hub, it will go along Houston Street, south Bannon Avenue, east Elm Street, Spring Avenue, west Irwin Street, west Ferguson Street, north Bonner Avenue, west Elm Street, and south Vine Avenue. As I mentioned earlier, the historical preservation purposes, for the historical preservation purposes, the entire hub will be a bike route. The overall length of the hub is 3.01 miles. This means we will have a total bike path network of 35.85 miles. This was the technical part of this presentation. Thank you for attending and listening.
First, I would like to summarize the public involvement opportunities that have occurred so far as part of the development of the Bike Stripes Project. A public meeting was held on January 30 at the Rose Garden, and approximately 72 people attended, and written comments were also received prior to and following that meeting. And tonight, May 11, 2020, the city is conducting a public hearing virtually online. Input from the public received during the previous meeting has been incorporated in the project planning and is being displayed tonight. The public hearing is the final step in the public involvement process for the environmental assessment. The public hearing is the final step in the public involvement process for the environmental assessment. At this time, we will discuss the project's schedule and construction cost estimates. Following tonight's hearing, the design team will complete a summary and analysis of comments received. Every reasonable effort will be made to address your concerns. Then the final plans will be submitted to Tech Dot for approval. We expect to receive the project's final approval this summer. The project is anticipated to be let in August of 2020 with installation of bike lanes completed in the fall. The current engineer's estimate has the total construction cost at approximately $930,000. As stated earlier, this is part of the Texas Department of Transportation's 2017 Alternative Set Aside Program. As part of that program, the city is responsible for 20% of the construction cost and an 80% match from the federal government. Before we take a brief recess, I would like to remind everyone that when you call, state your name and address. The city will not attempt to answer your questions during the open comment period tonight. This policy is necessary so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We will be happy to answer your questions after the hearing. All verbal and written comments and questions presented before May 26th will be addressed in the project's public involvement documentation. And this document will be made available for your review on the city's website. Now, let's take a 10-minute recess. And we'll come back and begin taking phone calls and public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now reconvene this hearing. We have presented the project's latest available information. And now it's time to listen to your comments. We will patch each caller through in the order received. When we do so, please state your name and address before proceeding with the statements. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. The official time will be kept on the screen. Please adhere to your time so everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please make sure your audio is muted when you begin talking to reduce feedback on the call. Also, when you're finished, please state that you are done so we can move orderly through the callers and make sure we do not cut anyone off. Again, the city will not address any comments or questions raised during this time. Take our first call.
Good evening. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is James Valberding. Address is 4902 Barclay Drive. And thank you very much, Mr. Williamson and Dr. Solomon. This is a brilliant presentation. The work you put into this is astonishing. It is attributed to a high level of skill and determination to make this work. It is a brilliant concept. I'll make two comments. First, is you undoubtedly know the spokes appear to be routes to nowhere. They just simply go in different directions and take awkward turns, and they're not in straight line. So that tells me that this is not intended to be an integrated bike transportation and commuting network. And obviously, you recognize this. This would have been something that you would have discussed. So it suggests to me that there are some impediments to an integrated transportation and commuting network. I suspect that there are three. One, Tech Dot controls the main arteries in the city. Two, you may anticipate neighborhood opposition. Three, you may consider their danger to be caused by straight roads like Donnybrook and a higher speed limit by cars and more traffic in those you attempt to avoid. So at some point, my request is that that you attempt to explain some of the practical impediments that you've encountered to a bike transportation and commuting network. My second point is this. There appears to be an excellent effort to make certain that their bike lanes are safe. And the buffer zone is a brilliant concept. The white lines are excellent. There appear to be some defects in the safety construction that could be easily remedied. Number one, we all know by looking at Sunny Brook that the white line is not enough to keep cars out of the space. I wish you to consider filling in the entire bike lane with blue with a color. A color will deter a vehicle driver from entering that space because it communicates it's for a dedicated purpose like bike lanes. And number two, there has been no discussion about barriers, physical barriers like curbs or trees or some other barrier that would prevent a car from entering the space, which is the key to making a safe bike lane. So those are my two comments. Thank you both gentlemen for the steady presentation. It's very skilled and I'm grateful on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Hi, this is Carolyn Allen. I live at 2706 Amy Lane. And my question is, is there any plan for adding either a bike lane or a share to University Boulevard from Loop 323 to Old Omen? I know along the spur 248 or University, there is a bike lane past Old Omen, but is there any one from the Loop to Old Omen? That was my question. Thank you very much. And I give up the rest of my time. Thank you. Bye.
Hello? Hello? All right, there we go. Okay, my name is Madeline Jolly. I live at 213 Heritage Circle. Seems to be a bit of a delay. All right, I guess I'm just going to go ahead with it. All right, so I'm not as knowledgeable as the other two callers have been on their comments about this. But my husband and I do have some initial concerns. The first one is, with all due respect, this sounds like someone's pet project. I've lived in Tyler for 15 years. I have never seen enough bikers on the road to merit a project like this. And also, let's not forget that we live in Texas. We all know that it gets sinfully hot and humid out here in the summertime. And I'm wondering if there really is any evidence that these will even get utilized year round, let alone with a substantial flow to merit their construction. Again, I don't believe or I'm not convinced that the need merits the cost here. And I certainly did not find out to pay for it, which is my main issue. If this were to be funded purely by donations, I think that would be perfectly fine. But you're talking about using taxpayer dollars for this project. Even a grant is still paid for by taxpayer dollars. And this isn't just initial costs either because we're also talking about maintenance for years in the future on this. So whatever projects we back, we're backing long-term with our money. The second point is that if we're going to do a project like this that caters to transportation outside of vehicles, wouldn't it be better to add something like sidewalks instead, which can be utilized by joggers and pedestrians alike? which can be utilized by joggers and pedestrians alike, aka a higher percentage of the people who are actually paying for it? And also, let's remember that unless you're going to take a whole list of measures, like the gentleman two calls ahead of me was mentioning, sidewalks are more safe than bike lanes because even bike lanes don't protect people from being hit by cars. I feel like in general, they pose more of a false sense of security than anything else. No one in Tyler is used to bike lanes. And let's be honest, we all go into autopilot mode at times when we drive. There will be bikers who are hit because people won't be paying attention and will drive on the roads that they're familiar with without thinking about moving their car four to five feet further than they're used to. And I'm worried about that, not just as a driver, but just as a citizen. I don't want to see anyone getting hurt. If you're going to force us to pay for a project, I just really feel that it should be something that we can all use that is safe and that we actually want. So I would highly recommend you guys think about sidewalks instead. I really feel like, again, if this has to be a thing, give us something that we can all utilize and that is safer. And again, I really do not see any evidence. Maybe it is. I haven't seen any evidence that the need merits the cost. And as a taxpayer, I am concerned about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the call. We'll take our next caller.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Weldon Lee. And my address is 7306 White Forest Cove, Tyler, 75703. And I'm new to the--
I'm sorry, caller. May I get you to please repeat your name?
Weldon--
The address?
7306 White Forest Cove, Tyler, 75703.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please go ahead with your comment.
I'm sorry. So I'm new to the bicycle route planning here. I wondered, in addition to the hub and spoke system that I see on the map, has consideration been made to completing that, like the inner bicycle loop of the city? It looks like Spoke 3, the southeast corner, could be connected to Spoke 1 with a less than one mile addition along Golden Road. And I guess Spoke 9A over to Spoke 4 would be a little bit longer. But those two additions would just about circumnavigate the city with an inner loop for bicycles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take our next call.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
My name is Marilyn Cuzzi. And my address is 1604 Terre Haute. And I just have a couple of questions. I'm sorry I missed the earlier hearing on this. But it appears this will be going right in front of my house. And so I just had a couple of questions. Is the bike lane two-way? Or is there going to be one on each side of the road? And my question is, when they're coming down Terre Haute, they're going to be coming downhill, so they're going to be picking up speed, and they're going to be turning left onto San Jacinto. And there's no stop sign at that corner for the cars at the intersection. And I'm wondering if they're going to be installing a stop sign also so that the cars have to stop when the bicyclists are coming down the hill. The other question I have just generally is, will there be signs or anything put in my front yard? I just wanted to get a lot of information about it. So I appreciate y'all having the hearing. I appreciate getting the comment. And I look forward to finding out some more information. Thank you.
Thank you for the call. And as I mentioned, we will summarize all the different comments and put together responses for each of the comments after the meeting. So we appreciate the feedback.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
Joe Sardar, 904 South Chilton.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a few concerns with this area on South Chilton. I know between Houston and Fourth or Fifth Street, there's a lot of street parking. I've counted at least possibly 30 cars in the evenings and on weekends. So it's going to make, not only are the bicyclists going to have to ride in the street, they're also going to make visibility difficult to see them, particularly backing out or coming out of driveways. The second point I want to make is that the grade on this thing is very steep from Houston to Fourth and Fifth Street with no stop signs. So they could achieve some pretty good speed by the time they get down to Fourth and Fifth Streets. So I think safety needs to, you know, could be an issue. The other thing I want to make a point about is the pedestrian traffic during the school year. We have a middle school just about two blocks over on Broadway. And there are a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic from the kids leaving school, which could also impact safety. I'm just, you know, my concern is safety not only for the bicycle riders, but as well for pedestrians and anyone else using the streets. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate you calling in. Go to our next caller.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
This is Jennifer Hoytma, 2051 West Cumberland Road, apartment 714, Tyler, Texas.
I'm sorry. Could you please repeat your last name?
It's Hoytma, H-O-I-T-S-M-A.
Thank you.
Go ahead with your comment, please.
Hi, this is Jennifer. And I was just calling as a member of the Tyler Bicycle Club and also a member of East Texas Trackleaks. I guess partly with the question, partly with commentary. I think there was a comment earlier about not a lot of people or cyclists in Tyler to warrant the bike lanes. So as an avid cyclist and as someone who's familiar with the hundreds even, a cyclist in the area, I just wanted to say hello and let you know that there are a lot of us that are eager to see the project move forward. And part of the reason that we're not out on the roads or highly visible is in part because of the lack of safety in the area. So we're encouraged by the project and what's happening. But also just to share the feedback that there are cyclists, and there are cyclists that are hurt in our area. And so we see this as significant progress. So thank you for your effort.
Call.
I'm good. I don't need any more of the time. So thank you.
At the moment, those may be the only callers that we have. So if there are additional callers, we encourage you to call in. We will stay here until, we'll have a few closing remarks. But we did advertise that we will have the public hearing from 6:00 to 7:30. So we will stay around until 7:30 in case there are any additional calls that come in.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
This is Carolyn Allen, 2706 Amy Lane. I called in earlier with a question, and now I have a comment. My comment is, I live very close to my work, less than two miles. And so I try, when I can, to ride my bicycle. However, it is kind of difficult to do so because I have to take a very winding route in order to use the bike lanes. So I'm very pleased with the increase of bike lanes because I find it kind of silly to drive less than two miles unless it's like a severe rainy day. But I'm just, I'm hoping that the city will open up and have more bike lanes because per my understanding, we're not allowed to ride our bikes on the sidewalks. So bike lanes is really the only safe way to be able to enjoy the city and commute to work or just see all the beautiful outdoors on our bicycle. So I'm hoping that this is the start of the larger project for more bike lanes. That is my comment. Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, caller. Please state your name and address.
This is Mary Ann Park. I'm at 915 East Grande in Tyler, Texas.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I've been participating in your live meeting. So I did want to let you know that I'm an avid cyclist. And so I have ridden on the sidewalks in town on Grande going east and west. Some of the time, the sidewalk is rough. There are patches that end up being gravel. So as a cyclist, I would say that I prefer to ride on the smoother surface of the road. When I try to go west over towards Owens or Fresh, I've tried a number of routes. But as I cross from Grande over Broadway, that does seem to be a dangerous intersection. And my question on that intersection is, would one of our routes help it out? And second of all, if you have to cross on the crosswalk, that pedestrian crossing is never long enough. The second intersection is also at Cumberland and 2493. We recently had a cyclist die at that particular intersection. And so I know well, trying to get across or even to go south to eventually get over west is a problem area as well. So the other crossing that I've also attempted is from Holly Tree. And you mentioned it was going across Grande. And it does have a pedestrian crosswalk there, but it does not seem like cars would be slowing down on Grande. So those are three areas as we do try to connect a route. I'm wondering about those. My other issue is I teach at the middle school on Divine Street. And so I also know the traffic on Divine. And so I was wondering if there are going to be the barrier that Dr. Suliman mentioned because I can speak from personal experience that we do have a lot of traffic on Divine, not only getting over to Tyler Junior College, but from the school. So those were my thoughts on the projected routes. I'm in favor of the bike routes. I think it will help increase real estate prices and our investments in Tyler. As a homeowner, I think that bike routes will elevate the health of Tylerites and also our investment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your call. So as we wait to see if there will be any additional callers, as I mentioned, we will wait until 7:30 before we close our public hearing. I will remind everyone that we have the latest plans online for each of the different spokes. You can pull those up in PDF format and see the routes and what is being proposed at specific locations. And you can continue to provide comments by email, voicemail, or US mail through May 26th for the public record and for us to take into consideration. While we're waiting on additional callers, I'll go ahead and show this slide that shows where you can send your written comments or by email or voicemail until May 26th. And then the phone number at the very top is the current call-in number if you should have any comments tonight that you would like to provide. Again, I'd just like to reiterate that we are going to continue to stay here until seven thirty in case there are additional calls. The call number for tonight is at the top of the screen right now. But if you wish to provide additional comments through May twenty-sixth, the address for US mail or email or for voicemail after tonight is at the bottom of the screen. So again, we're going to wait until seven thirty to see if we have additional comments to call in. And, uh, information to provide comments through the twenty-sixth is currently on the screen. As an update, we are waiting to see if we will receive additional calls tonight during the public hearing. We're going to be here until seven thirty. If you have a comment that you would like to provide tonight, you may call the nine zero three, three six three, zero six five one number. Or as I mentioned earlier, if you'd like to provide comments until May twenty-sixth, you may submit those by mail, email, or voicemail at the number at the bottom of the page. But again, we're going to stay here until seven thirty if there are additional comments for tonight.